Well, we're back with another Why Not Talk Kyler?
We are. We're live on a Tuesday afternoon. It's 1:00 PM, not 2:00 PM.
Yeah, still the change. Yeah. This time we have a special guest, Alderman Mike Blessam, joining us to talk property taxes. That's an exciting discussion. I'm sure you guys are already working on budget stuff.
Yeah, well, it'll come soon. I think the, I think departments are working on it at the city. And so ours, you know, I think our, our stuff will start up probably mid-March and we'll go pretty heavy from there all the way through almost October. So it's, it's budget becomes sort of a full-time job on the council.
You get like four months off or something?
Feels like you just got finished with the whole process.
Exactly.
Does, but obviously the property tax issue that we're going to be addressing more is something that's been presented at the state level. We've talked about it some. We have not talked fondly of the proposal that has come out of Bismarck per the governor's direction. And then obviously legislature is actually getting it presented. We haven't been too fond of it.
We haven't? I thought you loved it.
Yeah, okay Kyler. Yeah, maybe you love it in secret, but, but in public you have not talked fond of it.
Toothless or something, yeah.
So it's gonna be interesting to get your perspective on that today, Alderman. Obviously, there's probably some stuff you can say and some you can't say just because of the nature of it, how it corresponds with city stuff. So, but thank you for coming on.
Yeah, it's good to be with you guys.
It's exciting.
Absolutely. So where do you want to start Kyler?
Start at the state? Start, start with some state property tax stuff? Want to start going over that? The bill that Kelly Armstrong has in, or it just got out of committee, actually, the HB 1176. And it had some updates come through. One noticeable one that I noticed was they were going to eliminate state income taxes on people making under $55,000 a year and also on couples that make under $90,000 a year.
Yeah, so there was, that, that adjustment needs to come most sessions.
Sure.
Because that part of the tax code, I mean, you know, we run an accounting office, so we deal with this every single day for clients. Part of, part of what you need to do is keep up with inflation, right? So what, what that's doing is it's making sure that the zero bracket essentially moves with that. Make sure as time goes by that it's not falling behind. So, so that's, that was important for them to do. And actually, there was another bill, um, there was another bill that was, that was brought through that was actually focused on getting rid of the marriage penalty that was heard in committee this morning. Okay, that's another, that's another interesting aspect of that. That bill also has some adjustments to the brackets to make sure that that works. But, you know, getting rid of the marriage penalty would be nice because, I mean, if you think about it theoretically, at the very least, a married couple should have double what they, if, what, what would happen if they were, uh, if they were filing separately. Yeah, for sure. So they should have the ability to have their tax rate set like that. And in North Dakota law, I think we're one of 15 states that doesn't actually have that today. So. But anyway, back to, you know, back to what's become the governor's bill or House Bill 1176. It did get passed out of committee. And so a couple of, a couple of adjustments that came, the, the, some of it stayed the same. So the main, um, the, the property tax caps that would be applied to all local subdivisions stayed at 3%. Yeah. Um, but also kept the five-year look back. So that if, you know, if at the city, we, we were actually lower in our budget, um, one year, we would actually be able to use that savings towards future budgets if we did need to be higher in any one year.
So to clarify that, does that mean that at the end of five years, the fifth year, and you haven't used any increases you're able to raise budget by 15%? Or does that simply mean that any savings that you've incurred over that, those five years?
So, so you have 3% authority to grow. So if, let's say we make it super easy. So we've got $100,000 budget in '24. The '25 budget could be $103,000, okay? But if we only spent 100 in '25 as well, we kept it flat, that 3,000 we would be able to use in the next year to essentially make it effectively 106. I mean, you know, I believe, and there's different versions of this. And to be honest with you, I don't remember exactly which one is in the governor's bill, but the different versions use different ways of looking at it slightly. Some of them actually talk about the percentages. Some of them talk about the dollars, which to me is the simplest way to look at it. You know, again, if we budget $100,000 and we don't use the 300, 3,000 that we go up, we can move that $3,000 forward. To me, that's the simplest way to look at it. And I think that's what most of them use. And so, so yeah, so the, over the course of those five years, if you held it flat at 100 every single time, you could theoretically move it roughly 15,000, right? Yep. And so, and so, you know, the, there's been a lot of talk about that. And, you know, we took an action on the council, um, that, that certainly raised a lot of eyebrows around the state and in the Capitol.
Created some headlines.
And, 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 you know, to be clear with that, number one, the, the big thing, I think that it's important for everybody to understand, because there was, there was different, different talk about it. But one of them, one of the things that was brought up was that we were saying we weren't going to follow the law. Of course, we're going to follow the law. You know, the law is passed. We're not, we're not going to say, oh, you know, mine is different. We're not following it. So that, that, you know, just to get kind of rid of that part of it. But the other part of it is, you know, for me, a big thing was that, um, what I think would happen in this kind of scenario, and this is what I've told the committee. I was in front of them. I was the only opposition testimony on that bill when I was heard. So I was the only person standing up saying, I think there might be other ways to look at this. Yeah. You know, and so the, the, the point that I was trying to make was my belief is that most local subdivisions will automatically now set it at 3% forever.
Right.
Just a continuous 3% increase.
Because, you know, just like anything, you've got to be a little bit careful about what the future looks like. You know, we have to do that at the city. I mean, I'm all for keeping us as low as we can at all times, but we don't know what the future holds. There may be a time when we say, hey, we've got the ability to get some flood work done that would really move the project along. But you know what? We need a little bit of an increase here to make that happen.
Yeah.
I would have to look at that, even though I'm a guy who's going to want it lower, right? We've got to be smart and pragmatic about what we're doing. I think this proposal just sets it at three for everyone forever. I think that's what it is.
Why wouldn't you? And why would the citizens care? That's, that's what's weird to me is like, it's a bill that almost tries to get people to not care about what's going on in their city anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really, it really flattens it all out now. You know, to their credit, they, they've thought through this because if they're going to continue what I call the buy-down regime, the, the way that we do this, which is by sending state money locally, you've got to limit local spending because otherwise you get what we've had so far, which is just backfill, right? So the moment that, you know, I think if you look on the top, top of the property tax bills right now, it could be anywhere, say 1,500 to $3,000 in what's being bought down by the state. And that, none of us have seen any actual relief in the bill itself, which means that that money is being, is coming in. It's being immediately backfilled by the local subdivisions. And so that's why they designed it the way they did. And it's a, it's a, it's a clever way to go about it, you know? Hey, we're going to give you this, but we're also going to cap you so you can't grow that fast. I just think it's going to have unintended consequences. It's going to set us on a new trajectory that just stays at that forever.
And this is one thing I've been pointing out with it a lot too is, so it's already being bought down from the general fund. All they're doing in this is essentially just changing the buy-down from the general fund to the legacy fund.
Yeah, and that's, that's the general idea long-term. And that's, excuse me, that's kind of the, the other clever aspect of what Governor Armstrong has brought to the table is, hey, let's, let's start to use those earnings and put them to use for the people, right? Which I think in the grand scheme of things is a good thing. You know, this is one of the better ways to put that money to use. You know, I think we'd all love to get to where Alaska is, where we just get a check every year, right?
Gotta voted that down, right?
Yeah, exactly. And so, and so there's, you know, down the road, there's, there's those types of ideas. But that's kind of the, the path that, that, uh, the governor has set us on with this. Now, the one other aspect that is a little bit interesting, as it came out of committee, they also took what the governor, or what the bill produced, which was 1550 per property owner. Now, primary residents only, just to be clear on that, and it lowered it to 1450. And there was a, there was a financial reason to do that, and it has to do with the entire appropriations process. And, you know, what they'd sort of negotiated back and forth with the appropriators on what was coming. But what it does do then is it actually doesn't set you fully on the governor's path to zero.
Gotcha. So it's already starting to delay.
Well, and that's, and that's the scary part about it. Because here's the other thing to keep in mind. The way it's laid out, because it's a two-year bill right now, you're reliant on the next legislature to do the next step, right? So we could easily get in in two years and, you know, for whatever reason, oil revenue drops off a little or some other thing starts to happen. And the legislature goes, well, shoot, we can't keep up with the roughly 1,500. We've got to, we've got to do per session. So we're going to draw back on that a little bit, but the cap's still in place.
Right.
You know, now you're locally limiting that local spending. And, you know, one of the, one of the legislators in a different committee hearing talked about some of the reasoning why he thought local municipalities like mine at Fargo looked at this as well. Why some of us were a little leery of that. And he said, well, you're actually limiting our ability to meet obligations that we have, like flood obligations. You know, we, if we have flood obligations that say we've got to have a certain dollar amount to match the state and federal funds that are coming in, we've got to have the ability to, to bring those, right? So we, we do that through mostly through sales tax right now, but there's discussion right now about whether there might be additional funding that could come. And if that is the case, we've got to make sure we're ready for our share. You know, that's, and, and we've only got so many ways we can bring that in. Luckily, in a city like mine, uh, we've got multiple revenue sources. So it's not just, you know, we don't have all of our eggs in the property tax basket. In fact, we've got two full pennies. I mean, we've got almost about 26 million a year coming in, in sales tax. Wow. And so, you know, that's, that's big. Uh, you know, the one thing that I always think about, just looking at this from the city side now, as I've gotten to know it, imagine that 26 million if we didn't have half of it tied up in flood and laws.
Right.
Yeah. Right? I mean, you think of other cities in the state where they've got those options. I mean, I would love to see where we could get our property taxes if, if those obligations were gone. The hard part is flood isn't going to be gone in any of our lifetimes. I mean, just being clear about it. You know, you're talking bonding out there that's going through like 2080 right now. So it's, it's a long ways off.
I think I hope I'm still out here. Eighty-six. I don't think I need that. One thing that I, I go back to, too often, it's my little candy stick, um, is that what Kelly Armstrong said when, when they talked about, uh, capping the state and how immediately the special projects get caught out of the state budget. But it's interesting when the response is like, why would you, as a local, or not legislative, but as a local councilman, why would you be worried about these caps? Well, because the same pro, reason why the state would be worried about caps is the same reason that the city would be worried about caps. But there seems to be a disconnect there.
Yeah.
It seems to be that they think that this city should rely on the state funding or something for those special projects. Have you been frustrated? Put you on the spot. Have you been frustrated with the response to this in comparison to what the response was to measure four? Where there was a lot of people coming out against measure four, and now we see this that has a higher chance of passing than measure four did. And it seems like there's less opposition to it?
Well, I guess what I would say is that the groups that had come together under the keep it local umbrella to fight against measure four have not been as vocal. But I think, I think there's a reason for that. And sadly, it's political. I mean, that's, it all is. So as I mentioned, on 1176, which is the main property tax bill, you know, pushed by the governor, as I said, I was the only opposition on that. The, the League of Cities, the Association of Counties, who are strong parts of, of keep it local, um, brought testimony in favor of the bill.
Oh, wow.
Okay, but what they said was they want to continue the discussion around caps, because they acknowledged that it wasn't going to be easy for their, you know, for their member organizations, right? They knew that. And so they just wanted to make sure that the caps were workable, that that look back period was there. So, so they, you know, politically is probably the right way to go about it. I didn't have exactly the same constraints, so I could be a little more straightforward. And again, when I was there, I'm, I'm theirs myself, you know? I don't, I don't represent the council, and I'm at the beginning of my testimony. I always say that to them. You know, we did eventually take action as a council and actually put a stamp on it that way. But, you know, for most of the discussion, as I've been down there, I've been in front of that committee, I don't know, I guess, five days, probably 10, 10 to 12 different bills on, on property tax reforms, on other, other, other types of bonding referendums and stuff like that. And, and it has been an ongoing conversation, you know, that I'm having with that committee to try to make sure that they have a perspective from a local council member. That's not just what the League of Cities brings, because what they bring is important, as is the Association of Counties and the other stakeholders. So it's, you know, there's, there's, as you would expect in the Capitol, there's a lot of political things that go on. That's the way that it works.
That's the nature of the game.
I don't know that it's surprising that the League of Cities supports it for this one reason. They obviously came out against the caps, but for the, for the cities in general, it says you can just spend whatever you want. And you don't have to worry about people necessarily looking with as much of a magnifying glass. Whereas your guys' approach, or your approach specifically, I mean, you guys cut down the mill levy last year that the city was going to charge. And right now, I, I know this is you shooting from the hip, this is not committing to anything. Would you anticipate that that would be something that has the potential to remain stable or, or potentially decrease in, for the next budget?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see where we'll end up, but I mean, you know, my, my, my thought would be, number one, this law is going to make it through. There's going to be some version of a cap, so we're going to be within that. But my intention before that was even the case was we've got, so with this last budget at the city, we were able to do some things based strictly on the amount of money we had in reserve. You know, we were at the very upper limit of what we can even do under the law. And so it was, it was relatively straightforward to say, no, we just got to give it back.
Yeah.
So now to continue from there, now we start into some of the other harder work that we're going to need to do. You know, we still have some money to work with, you know, this year, our sales tax receipts, um, we don't have the final numbers yet, but they're going to be up. They were up slightly about 5% year over year from 23, but they were up almost 25% from budget.
Wow.
So, you know, we have a fabulous finance director. I hope you guys know that. Dave Lakefield is very, very good at what he does.
Okay.
And so part of, part of that though, is that he's very conservative in that respect, that he, he will always sort of under-promise and over-deliver. And, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a good place for us to be, you know, in a, in a, I always say in a private business, that's profit, right? That's how you get the profit. But when that's a government, I don't want that. I want break even, right? I want, I want to make sure that the government delivers fabulous services at the price that's as low as we possibly can. So that combination though, I mean, when you're talking being over by 25%, that might be, you know, two, three, four, five million dollars that we're going to, that's going to be extra sales tax that we collected. We also, I would, I would imagine are going to come in somewhat lower on the cost of running the city.
Okay.
Because if nothing else, we've run, what, 15 to 18 police officers short all year. So that alone, that's a million and a half dollars probably. It may be a little more than that. So, and again, there's other moving pieces. There's a lot to it. But the point of it is, is that I would expect that we'll enter this year again, putting, a bunch of money went into reserve again in the general fund. And because of that, we'll have a similar capability to do the same thing again. But we also now have to start taking other steps. And so, and actually, that, that gets into another bill that one of the reasons that I'll be down on Thursday this week is a bill that I've, I've worked with the city manager on. Scott Lauser had a version of it that we ran in the House, and now it's going to be going through, um, the Senate, uh, with a slightly different version. And Senator Bob Paulson is bringing that. And so what that bill does is it, it changes century code in the sunshine laws to allow records, uh, the employee records of city employees or of public employees to be protected from requests for information.
Okay.
For a period of three years. So it says, you know, the last three years that you have are protected. So there's, we're, as our staffer coaching employees, we're, we're making sure that they have the full ability to do that. And their coworkers are going to be able to do a records request and read the employee records, right? I mean, to me, I think it seems straightforward, but there's a lot, we have a, we have very, very strong sunshine laws, and that's good. That's a good thing. Right? But there are very specific carve-outs like this where it can make sense. And so that's what this bill does. And the reason that's important is part of the, part, one of the other things I did coming out of the budget was I asked, I brought a motion and we passed it to direct the city manager to develop a plan for merit-based pay increases. So the idea isn't, oh, everybody across the board, I think we did a little over 5% in the last budget. Everybody gets the same raise. It shouldn't be that way.
Right.
I look at it kind of 80/20 thing, right? You're, the, the vast majority of your great work is done by a small core group of people throughout the city, and we need to treat them great. We need to get them good raises. We need to make sure they're happy in their jobs, that they stick around and continue to do great work. There's a, a, a large middle that should get roughly inflation, you know, around that. Just make sure we're keeping up, make sure it's all working. And to be honest, is with any organization, the city is not different than anywhere else, but there's going to be some who lag.
Of course.
You know, and there's going to be some who are not knocking it out of the park each and every day. And I don't need them to get the same raise as the top performer in the department, right? I think we need to get more real about that and just admit what it really is, which is what industry does every single day all around the world, right? That's how that works. When we do that, that will lead to cost savings long-term. Because you can get the six, seven, eight percent raises for your top performers by offsetting them with some lower raises for those that aren't meeting the grade. And the thing about it is, when you do that, those that aren't meeting that grade, they see that, they either become a top performer through coaching, or they opt out.
They start phasing.
Either one is okay.
Yep.
Right? And so those are the kinds of things that allow us to actually start to get at the reality of the budget. This past year was really some things in the edges and with reserves and things like that. Now we actually start going into what needs to happen. And you know the crazy thing? You know, you think of, the three of us that got elected this year, you think of sort of the new thinking, the new kind of ways that we're going to go about things. Who would have ever thought the federal government would be going crazy with cost controls and trying to figure out where the waste is? Well, before someone like us is like that. I mean, that's kind of crazy to think about, isn't it?
That is crazy.
You don't, it wasn't one thing I had on. Yeah, I didn't have that on my bingo card.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, blue rider, do better. Better bingo cards. One, one, another question though, and I was going to ask about the upcoming budget, but that's not fair because I, I, you don't want to speculate on that at this point. But based off the last budget, where, where there was the buy-down and there was all that, and it was kind of a neat change. If there was a 3% cap where all that, would you have done that?
I, I probably would, I probably would have done the same thing. One thing to know about the decision or the motions that I brought that kind of led to that, I was doing that in an environment where measure four could have set our, our baseline at a much lower level. And we had discussion on the council, and actually, if you guys, if, if you remember those votes, the final vote on the budget was five to two, mainly because of that issue. So it wasn't, you know, they were, it was 7-0 when I presented it and kind of put it in everybody's face. We need to give the people their money back, and I think I got everybody there. But by the time we actually finished it, there was this looming measure four problem that said, we'll set our baseline. Now, we already did, already does that, right?
Yeah.
So, so I, I don't know that I would have done it different, because at the end of the day, I can't take each decision like that as a 10, 15, 20-year decision. We have to use what we've got today. We've got to think through what it actually looks like and make sure that we're getting people the relief they were looking for. I mean, that was the other part of that is, I don't think you can go through an election cycle and, and tell people, here's what I'm about, and then not even try to deliver on it. So that was very important to me. Now, I also don't want that to be a one-time thing. Yeah. So now the real question becomes, assuming the legislation passes, which I think it will, you know, we're going to have this cap that comes in. The real question is, for me is, can we find ways to keep edging downward, not, not let it start to go up? So the good news is, is that with the, the ability to roll that forward, we're going to have that ability to use it if something comes up. But my hope is that we don't. My hope is that we can hold on to about where we're at and, and hopefully edge it down even from here.
So your goal wouldn't be to push the 3% every year? Your, your goal is to keep it stable, zero?
As much as possible.
Yeah, which obviously there's going to be fluctuations. And one thing that also came out of committee with this is there was a little bit of a amendment that happened to that portion of it. It was the, uh, the voter opt-out provision. That's, yeah, yeah, where it gives voters a chance in a municipality to, if the city has one big project that they need to present, uh, the, the voters can then, it'll be presented in a referendum, so the voters of the city can approve said increase at that point. It's a one-time kind of thing, or I think it can be done, uh, once every 10 years, or it can increase the cap for up to 10 years kind of thing.
There's, there's two parts to it.
Sure.
So, so the first is that with, with a referendum, you can do it anytime. So if we decide, hey, we know, we need to go up 8% this year because we've got to meet our flood numbers.
Yeah, right.
Um, we can do that as a one-time thing for one budget. The, the chairman of the committee, Craig Headland, brought an additional amendment on top of that, that is a 10-year opt-out for, for municipalities and counties. And so what that would allow is we could go to the people one time to say, you know, waive this for us for 10 years. Now, okay, for me, I don't, I don't know who in the world is going to ever vote for that.
Right.
Number one. And so, and, and not that, you know, it's, it, these are, these get to be such funny things, right? Like, I've got, I've had plenty of my friends across the state that are kind of in the, the cost-cutting circles, right? Who are saying, you know, you don't like the caps? It's like, well, no, because I'm for local control.
Right.
I want the flexibility to do the things that we need to do locally. But I also would not be a proponent of going out to try to get a 10-year exemption either.
Right.
Sure. Because I, I mean, for me, it's, it's all artificial. This is all putting artificial impediments in the way of what really the underlying issue of all this is, which is we need to elect people who care about it. If you want your property taxes lower, you need to either run yourself or you need to find somebody that you can vote for that is dedicated to doing that.
For sure.
That, that's what it is at, at every local subdivision.
Yeah, that's what it boils down to.
Exactly. And, and whether it's through a measure or whether it's through action at the state, it all adds up to the same thing. We're just moving the same dollars around the buckets different ways.
Right, yeah.
Until you actually get somebody who cares about the trajectory of our spending, it doesn't make any difference.
Right, yeah.
And unfortunately, that's what all of the measures up until now, not, not constitutional measures, but the, the measures, the bills, the things that the legislature has done. They've left that, those dollars in there, and that, that buy-down concept has just been backfilled. And so nobody actually feels it in their pocketbook.
Yeah. I, 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 the more we talk about this bill, the less I like it. I just wish that there was more, uh, momentum in, in the legislature to do something different than this, but it doesn't sound like it's going to happen. Go ahead Kyler.
I think one other thing too, that I've, I know we've talked about in the past, is just the viability of the legacy fund to pay off people's property taxes long-term. Hopefully, it's a good, it's a thing that can happen, and hopefully the growth can continue in the legacy fund at its current rate. And we can, in, you know, 10, 12 years, have everyone's primary residents end up being tax-free. But I just feel like there's such, uh, blank space there for possibilities of things that can happen. We could have mass, I mean, uh, it's not likely we're North Dakota, but if we have a massive population influx all of a sudden, that's going to cause a spike in that buy-down then. I mean, there's, there's such a possibility, or such a, the realm for possibility is open for anything to happen with that.
Well, and, and that's the other thing, is that none of it's locked in anyway.
Exactly.
So we're, we're always going to be going session by session to get this done. But the really, the really strange part about this is, is, you know, whether it was keep it local or all of the opponents of, of measure four, they kept saying, well, there's no plan for actually doing this, right? So what, what it did was it, it cut it all off at once. Where the plan today, even if you see it working perfectly, the way that it's laid out, within 10 years, that roughly $3 billion price tag that everybody was squawking about, it's going to be that and more.
Yeah.
And it's all going to be done that way. But meanwhile, those budgets are going to continue to climb at at least a 3% clip across the state. Where if, and again, I, I talked to you guys about this. I wasn't beating the drum for measure four.
Right.
I did vote yes, but I'll be honest, just barely. You know, I, I was on, did the, you know, we did the, um, the debate. We went through all this. To me, it was never the perfect answer for what was going to go on. So, you know, I think it's important for people to understand that I'm not coming at this as a sore loser because measure four failed. I'm trying to get to good policy.
Right.
And right now, I think we're headed, we're headed for something that may end up costing more than measure four would have, but without the natural safeguards that measure four actually had in place. Because what would have happened under measure four, we would have been locked in at 24 million. We'd have gotten that check every year from the state. And that's where the $3 billion price tag came from.
Sure.
But once that was locked in, it was on us to figure out where the rest of it came from.
Yeah.
Right? So now we got to figure, okay, well, we, we need more than that. So what do we do? We can't do it through value-based property tax, and there was all kinds of things that you could do. But the point that most people came to was, well, you'll have to raise this, or you'll have to do a fee, or you'll have to do this. Well, no, how about if we lower spending?
Right.
Right? Imagine that. Imagine if that was the thought process people had to have. Now, the caps might do a little of that. I think in most cases though, it's just going to be, okay, set it at three, and whatever works out, we got to move the money so that it works out.
Yeah.
So that you know that you're going to have a 3% increase every year? That's what you're going to have to work your budget into any project, whatever it may be. It's going to have to fit into that box.
And keeping in mind that at least at the city right now, there, the, the trajectory on salaries alone for staff, excuse me, because we've gone through, we've gone through a couple salary reviews and things like that, there's a, there's a general sense that we've got to move them along a little bit more quickly than normal. You know, that's why the plan itself showed we needed to go about 7% with this last budget.
Sure.
You know, now we worked with the city manager, with the HR director, um, you know, Alderman Janser is the council president. In his letter, had a proposal that we use what they called the hybrid model, which, which, um, gave people the better of the two options, but not both. So it wasn't additive essentially, if your step increase was off and your, and your normal time and position was off. So it, it did those things, but even with that, it only brought it back to five. Well, imagine if we have to do 5% increases going forward, but we're limited overall to three. Where else is it going to come from? I mean, I, we're going to stop doing maintenance on pickups? I mean, you know, we, it's got to come from somewhere.
Yep.
Right? And, and that's, but again, that's all artificial. It's all, it's all this outside imposition. And, and you know, you, you reference the state looking at this for themselves. So there was that bill, House Bill 1502. Christina Wolf, a minor representative, I worked with her to get that bill put together, and I went in and presented it in committee. Now, it's interesting, it came up in this context, because two years ago, we had a similar bill that was brought before the same committee. Representative Jeff Hooversen brought that bill, and I was there to talk to them about that. That limited the overall state budget.
Okay.
Meaning the full, you know, Governor Armstrong's budget's 19.89 billion. It said, don't grow that any, we did at that time, any faster than personal incomes are growing, because legislative council every session puts out what the, what the personal incomes are. And I thought, man, what better tie to the people than what they're actually making, right? You know, it's better than CPI, better than all those. You know, it's better than CPI, better than all those. So we said, do that. In any case, I think it got something like nineteen votes on the on the house floor.
Okay.
So we brought this bill this time and this time we limited to the general fund, tried to get it as close to that. We put the same rolling idea that if you have savings for five years, you can continue to use those. We were trying to align it so it was the same exact concept. And it was interesting, the big difference that I felt in the bill was this wasn't the federal government imposing it on the states, which you could make a case they should. Right?
Yeah.
I, you know.
Especially with some of those bigger states that have some really bad spending issues.
Exactly. At least a third of our, at least a third of our overall budget comes from federal dollars, at least.
Right.
Um, and and a lot of times it's even more than that. And so you could make the case that the federal government ought to do the same thing to the states.
Right.
But as I stood before them, what I, what I said was, that's not even what this is. We're asking you to self impose it. That's the difference between what's being asked of us at the local level versus what we were asking in that bill. Self impose this and it even had provisions in there with a two thirds vote, you can waive it, any session you want. But we just want something in place that makes it a conscious effort if you need to do that. And, you know, there was right away in the committee, there was some pushback about, well, we can't really do that. The general funds got too many dollars moving in and out from different funds. The SIF funds coming through that, whatever, whatever, right? It's all the minutia and the hard budget stuff. And I said, look, I'm not an expert in your budget. I'm trying to become an expert in my city's budget. That's where I'm trying to focus.
Step one.
Yeah, exactly. But at the same time, this is more of a generalized concept. And so, once again, it got about the same thought process on the floor. I think, you know, eighteen nineteen votes again, whatever it ended up being. But but for me, it was an important point and and the good news is Jeff Hooverson got up and spoke on the floor. And he asked a question of the bill carrier from the, from the committee. He asked him, you know, did you discuss how this looks optically? When the state is saying, no, we don't want a cap, but we want you guys to have one. And so it was a good question, you know, I think it was, it was. And and the bill carrier handled it fine, but that that was really the point that we were, we were trying to make there. It wasn't necessarily to say. Hey, you should necessarily do this, although I I wouldn't mind it if they did. But the point was to to kind of draw that that comparison that, oh, boy, you know, we've got some. We've got some pretty big similarities going on here and how the two things work.
Absolutely. Interesting discussion so far. We're gonna take a quick sixty second break. We'll be back.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real time data, detailed reports. And actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering lighter mapping and inspection services. So that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.
We're back.
We're back.
All right.
Another great drone ad. Love to see it. If you want your ad up there, make sure you contact us. We can definitely uh put something fun together for you.
Kyler's, Kyler's ready to rock.
You betcha.
You betcha. All right. So continuing on in this property tax discussion, there's a bill uh that was submitted by. Local legislature, Scott Lowser. Um, and so I, are you familiar with that one?
Yeah.
Why don't you take us through it?
Yeah. So House Bill eleven sixty eight also just got, is, it just came out of committee, I believe. Um, and it's going back to the floor. And so this one I actually kind of liked for one very specific reason. The idea of doing buy downs, in my mind, makes much more sense if you go into the school world where I believe the constitution already dictates.
Right.
They should be paying for.
Yeah.
And so continuing that buy down effort actually does make sense and and you know, kudos to Scott Lowser for putting that together. It originally started as a sixty mil bill, which would have been pretty significant, I think. If I remember Scott's numbers, it was somewhere thirty ish percent of property tax would be reduced for 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 everybody really across the state. So that was at sixty mils for primary residences in the bill. They just got through amending it and before they sent it to the floor. And I think what they did, it was a competing bill while it was at sixty mils. Because the price tags were so high. You know, you're talking four hundred to seven hundred million on the bills.
Yeah.
And so what I think they did and the, I think the reasoning is, is that they like this concept and they want to continue down the path of school buy down. And so they moved it to ten mils, but they put it across all property types. So it allows them a couple of things. Number one, it lets them get. All property types involved in some property tax relief, which I think is really important because remember eleven seventy six is only primary residence, which.
Yeah.
You know, that matters a lot, but there's a lot of property owners that have other types of property, right? So number one, it does that. Number two, it also does something on the school side to start moving them downward as well. And so I think that combination is probably the reason why they did what they did to amend it. And then send it out to the floor with the idea that if both got done, they are complementary and they can work together. So I think that's kind of the idea that they went with.
That's a good point. And I'll hold on to what you're saying because mine's just a passing thought, but with eleven seventy six. It, it seems like renters should be extremely upset by this because when it transfers over to the legacy fund being used. That is something that could have been used for state residents to be getting a thousand dollar check back fifteen hundred, whatever that might would be. And if it's covering property taxes or chances that happening probably becomes pretty much nil. Because we're just giving it, but budgets don't have to be, they have to be balanced, but they, but they're gonna continue to increase. People don't have to worry about they're spending too much. State's gonna cover it as, and it just is so.
On the surface, you don't have to worry about your primary home.
That's ten years from now. That's to be clear also is while your property taxes are being promised to be paid for ten years from now. If it continues to go the way that the governor wants it to go.
How many things from ten years ago that they said would be done in ten years are done, just on a general concert across the board thing.
Yeah, it it's true. So you were gonna ask a question.
Uh, just, well, I was gonna make a point more just with the school aspect of it. I think one really fun thing with it is is how Scott Lowser has that school board. He's on the Minot School Board. He has that personal knowledge of the school board's budget. And obviously Minot Public Schools have had issues with theirs over the past few years. They're doing some great work on it right now. But I I think he brings a really good perspective to this. I mean, he's able to show firsthand what a school board's budget would be able to do to change. And how it would be able to be worked and maneuvered around at that point.
And I think an important point to make there too is that Scott has done this very strategically. You know, he he decided, hey, I see an issue on the school board. I'm, I wanna go and run and get involved and kudos, right? I mean, that's, that's, I was just saying a minute ago, we need good people to step up and run. He did that. Then he also gave up a committee chair seat. He was the 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 committee chair of the the House I B L or the Industry Business and Labor Committee.
Okay.
Okay. He gave that up to join appropriations and specifically on the education and environment subcommittee. So he went directly into the sort of the belly of the beast of what needed to happen. And also brought this bill. So, you know, I give Scott a lot of credit for that. He, he, he's putting his money where his mouth is here and working hard to try to get this stuff done. And and again, it's, you know, this is the one place where, as I mentioned before, those buy downs make more sense to me. Because in my opinion, they should have been paying this all along.
Right.
So it it actually, if you're gonna do it, this is the logical place to do it.
Right, absolutely. Well, let's, in this property tax discussion with this, basically. As the legislative session is beginning to unfold and we see what's happening. At this point, what would you like to see come out of the legislature concerning property taxes?
Well, I, I'll maybe answer it this way. Here's what I think is going to happen. I think it's gonna be pretty close to what eleven seventy six looks like right now. There's gonna be some form of the cap. I actually, if it happens, I hope it's this. Because this is the better version. There are other versions that were CPI up to three. Which, you know, again, I'm not here because I want the extra money.
Right.
I'm here because I want the flexibility to make sure we're doing the right things. And so that's, so I think that's gonna be there. There's gonna be a buyout, a buy down. Of of somewhere along the lines of fourteen fifty, which is what the bill has right now. One, one other last thing I'll I'll throw on this at the end. One of the things I've talked about throughout is s- some other structural way of looking at this rather than assessed value. Which is what measure four did well. Would have gotten rid of that completely. There's another bill um that was out there that was a possibility that. Got turned into a study now. And that's to study, what would it take to move over to square footage? And I worked back and forth. Nathan Tolman from Bismarck is the bill sponsor on that one. This is one that I've talked to the committee chair about a couple different times. And it it can work and I actually got a data set from the city of Minot from our city assessor. He was able to put it together for me. To study what this would look like. And it it can do some funny things. There's some weird, there's some weird properties in terms of what square footage looks like.
Yeah.
But in general terms, if you can get flipped over to it, my opinion is it makes more sense. And the beauty of that bill was if we pass a budget that goes up by four percent, you know, your property taxes go up by four percent.
Yeah.
It's as simple as that.
Straight across the board.
Assessment, there's no, oh, shoot, my assessed value went up by seven percent. So now I'm way the heck up. There's none of that game going on. There's none of, it's not opaque. It's now completely transparent. The moment you hear us pass that ordinance for the budget, you know exactly what your property taxes are gonna do. And so they're gonna study that in the interim. As long as this passes, they'll study it. Hopefully they'll come back. Now, the the unfortunate part is they've studied it before. And so, you know, you always kind of have to wonder whether that's actually gonna go anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It's, it's a nice initiative at least to see happen.
Yeah, cuz I think it's, to me, that's the most important thing that they could actually look at is to, is to do something structural like that rather than, you know, just continuing the buy downs and buy downs.
And it's far more equitable that way, too. If you have a bigger home, you're gonna pay more. If you have a smaller home, you're gonna, with, obviously, I'm sure there's some caveats to it. But generally across the board, and when you raise your in your property taxes by, like you said, three to five percent, you know it's gonna go up three to five percent. If it's dropped one percent, you know, you're gonna get a decrease in it.
Right, exactly. And that's how it should be.
No, a hundred percent.
All right. So believe it or not, property taxes is not the only thing that's going on at at in Bismarck right now.
No, there are a few other things.
So why don't we go around the table and kind of share our, our bill of the day? But it doesn't have to be that it's your favorite bill. It can just be one that's kind of funny, obnoxious or that you actually like.
Do you have one in mind?
I I have two.
Go ahead.
I have a tie today. One of them probably has already received decent attention. And that was um bill one two nine eight. HB two, one two nine, which is simply increasing the speed limit to eighty.
Okay.
Yeah. On the interstate. So you gotta love that, right?
That's a good one.
Uh, that's a good one. Though, we were driving on the interstate.
They were already going.
Weekend. And then I was driving on the interstate last, well, very beginning of this month. And one, one of the times I was in a fifteen passenger van, the other time I was in a Tahoe. And man, it's hard to even get to eighty miles an hour. It's hard to get to seventy nine. It's hard to get to seventy five miles an hour.
Yes.
Whatever I was driving.
Whatever you were actually going, it was, it was trucking along to get up to.
And those vehicles is hard. Um, yeah, so and so probably some of the feedback that people will go on eighty five, probably not gonna happen a lot. It kills your gas mileage.
It does. It'll tank you.
I have a story. I was in Fargo years ago, a couple of years ago, my truck. And I was going to Brookings, South Dakota. I had enough gas to get there. I get on the interstate, then I get into South Dakota and it increases to eighty. And I almost ran out of gas. I barely got it to, and that's just because gas mileage killed. Uh, once I started going eighty, at seventy five, I would have been fine. So it'll be interesting to see how this taken advantage of. The second one uh is one four five eight. This one I, we've talked about it briefly. Uh, and it might be something that I I go and write something about. Um, and this is uh about the, the. It's designed to prevent uh self, self spreading disease, the spreading disease.
Oh, I remember you've talked, yeah, you spoke about that one before.
Where you can't, you can't create diseases that would spread. Um, and then the vaccinations that would go along with it. So that one's kind of an interesting one as well. But we'll bring more attention to that. Who wants to go next?
So I'll go next, just mainly because it's a segue from your speed limit one. So.
Okay.
Uh, House Bill thirteen sixty six is, is one, it it's also on speed limits. And it, um, it actually got a do not pass out of the transportation committee, um, really close, I think eight to six um on the do not pass. And it should be on the floor today, but it, there's a couple of interesting aspects. One is that it increases some of the um, some of the fines. Related to uh to speeding in particular. But the other portion and an amendment that they brought before it came out. Uh, was something that not a lot of people know about, but state law actually has all the requirements right now for what speed limits need to look like and what fines need to look like across the state.
Okay.
But they had a caveat in law that allowed local municipalities or local entities to go up to double that. So as an example, if the, if the normal speeding limit, the speed speeding fine that the state allowed was a forty dollar ticket. In the side of the city of Minot, Minot by ordinance could double that to eighty. And I think the general idea was we don't want, you know, we don't want you to be driving across rural North Dakota and suddenly you're in Harvey. And you get pulled over and it's a seven hundred and fifty dollar ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah, just something outrageous, right? So that's why you want some, some semblance of that. But the way we went about it was so weird. We said, well, here's what the law says, but you can go double that if you want to. Interestingly, Minot does double. So we do double ours in Minot. So though, and again, I I watched a little bit of this committee hearing. I can't say that I caught all of it. But I believe the general idea in the end was, let's up all the rates, but let's also get rid of that doubling concept. So essentially, anyone who already had doubled would still get the same fines that they could collect. But it wouldn't allow them to double it based on state law anymore. And so kind of an interesting one that, you know, it's just a weird way that the law works sometimes.
Yeah.
And Minot took advantage of it. That's what we were doing. For me, you know, kind of putting on my, the libertarian hat that is part of the way that I look at the world. You know, I don't, I don't want outrageous fines.
Right.
You know, like we, we want fines in place that say, you know what, for a civil society, we want things to be safe and orderly and all those things. You don't make it four thousand dollars for a speeding ticket.
Right, yeah.
You do something that makes more sense. If you do it excessively or you do it multiple, multiple times, your insurance is gonna get impacted. But we don't make money as a city through fines. We don't want that.
You don't want that to be, you don't want that to be a legitimate revenue source.
Exactly. I had somebody that uh connected with, uh, they were speeding on the freeway in Out West somewhere.
Oh, no.
Got themselves, I think it was around a thousand bucks.
That's incredible. Uh, I have a House Bill fourteen sixty nine. And what it does, this is one that adds a little extra transparency to some of the political candidates that are running in state. So it adds a couple of extra things that people, they have to uh register with the state, Secretary of State. Has to, they have to do a statement of interests. So they have to detail their income sources, different financial interests. Business affiliations and government contracts if it's over five thousand dollars. And it's for any office holder and they must submit an annual disclosure by January fifteenth. That's an interesting one. Adds a little bit more to public, some, some of those transparenc. Obviously, they already have to file all of their finances and stuff. It's nothing with that. Just adds a couple of extra layers of things that they need to file.
Yeah.
Make sure you're not getting any, you know, suspicious kickbacks from anywhere. And if you are, at least that way, you're, you'd have to disclose it.
Leif says he hasn't been pulled over for speeding in Minot in a long time and we're all thankful for that, Leif. Stay off the road, buddy.
You're doing good, Leif.
All right.
Have, have any other bills you want to talk about, Jonathan?
I don't, I don't have many other bills.
Like any other state stuff you want to bring up before we dive into a couple of little city things?
No, there, you know, there's, there are a few other things that are going on down there right now, you know, for, for those viewers that are interested in the Republican Party politics. There's competing bills about primaries versus, you know, those local districts. You know, that's, that's super important stuff for those of us that are involved in the party because, you know, there's, there's this idea that people say, well, why would you let forty political insiders? Choose the candidates?
Right.
And I look at it the opposite and which is to say, look, if I'm gonna put the time and the effort into being a member of this party and being a leader in the party. We should get that extra say. They get to use our brand on the, on the ballot. They get to put the R behind their name.
That's huge.
You need to go through the local district to to make sure that that happens and get the insiders on your, on your side. And so, you know, that was a, the, the bill um was brought by a Bismarck representative that was trying to get rid of that entire local process. And make it all be based on the primary. And it brought out a lot of people. It brought out, you know, Sandy Sanford, who's the chair of the party. It brought out former governor Ed Schaefer.
Yeah.
And and, you know, John Trandam, who's the first vice chair of the other Republican Party, brought out, you know, brought out a lot of people. Um, Bob Harms, former, former chair of the party. Yeah. So we, you know, there's a lot of people coming out and saying, look, if you want the party to actually mean something, you've, you've gotta stick with more or less the way that it is. Now, there are, there's another bill that actually strengthens that. And so Ben Koppelman has a bill that says.
Yeah.
If you get the party endorsement, you're the only one that can be on the primary ballot. Get on the primary ballot. If you want to still run, you can run as an independent, but that would be in the general election. You'll have an eye behind your name. You will not have the party's endorsement.
I think that should happen.
I, I, to me, if we're gonna have parties as private organizations to actually mean something, that is the way it should happen.
Right, yeah.
Because it is the party that does that, you know, if if we do it that way and people really care, we have all kinds of events, you know. Every single district across the state right now is going through their, their reorg that happens every two years where you elect a new chair. You elect the executive committee, get involved, you know, out west, there's, you know, ours aren't quite as big. We might hit eighty to a hundred around Minot. Out west, District Two, even south of there, you can hit four hundred at a, a district reorg. That to me, if you're gonna have a functioning party, is the way that ought to work.
The legislator in Bismarck, hey, I'll say his name, last name Nate, um, that was uh talking about that bill, the first one you brought up. One of the frustrations he mentioned was that at his um district meeting, the district chair was actually running. So he's conducting the meeting and he was running. Um, do you feel like if you're going to have it where you have to go through the party? In order to get on that ballot, you can't just get signatures, that the chair should allow someone else to run that meeting?
So, so interestingly, I have some insight into that meeting.
Okay, sure.
So, number one, I was the parliamentarian at the meeting.
Okay.
And for the portion where, and his name is Justice Amundson, Justice. And for the portion where, and his name is Justice Amundson, Justice was running for that seat, he actually turned the gavel over to me.
Gotcha.
So Justice did not run the meeting when he was nominated and, 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 uh, and passed as their, as their candidate. So um, you know, I, I think, I think that there's a legitimate question if he had done that, but he did it exactly the right way. Which is to turn over the gavel. And so, and so again, I mean, there was with that, with that reorganization, a- and in all local party politics, there's tons of stuff that goes on. That's the way that, that is. You know, I, I feel like, you know, the friends that I do things with statewide that work on this kind of stuff and work in party politics. We've worked to bring as much transparency as we can to that, you know, in, in a meeting um, just about two years ago, right after Sandy Sanford won the, for chair, we also brought two important um, rules changes right after that. One was that all districts had to publish their district meetings as well as any requirements for participation no less than ten days before they're required to have the stuff in. So the idea, and that's on the state website. The idea was we had people running reorgs with, you know, three of us sitting around a table like this. Hardly doing the notice requirements or doing anything. So people didn't even know what was going on. And we've got to clean all that stuff up. And so part of that, part of running a clean party is because this stuff does matter. I mean, we're, you know, that's how you're electing legislators. So um, you know, it needs to run the right way. But it, that's another, that's another interesting set that's of bills that's going on.
For this reason alone, voter registration isn't necessarily a bad idea. I know that's a bad word.
It's not my favorite. And it, it'll be really hard over, you know, for me to ever get there. I can see why it, it holds that. But for me, what I love is the picture of, you know, someone who comes to Minot because they're working in the oil fields. They're here for forty-five days. They've established a residency. They've got an apartment. They've got that water bill walking in to say, I want to vote. And we can, we can get them ready on the spot to take a ballot and go vote. I think, I think North Dakota has it right. There are places where we say, oh, North Dakota's lagging all that stuff. I like this one. I like being the only one without registration.
And so on the flip side then of that, the bill that Koppelman has presented basically solves the same problem. Because you, there's can only be one R on, on that ballot and that's it.
Again, we look at it as a brand. If you're going to use the Republican Party brand, you need to work through our processes to get it and to use it.
So in theory, in that process, if someone wanted to challenge, say, Senator Hoven or Kramer for their sitting seat, how would they go about doing so? Would they have to go through the Republican Party to try to get their name on the ballot then?
Which is exactly what happened. So this past spring, or I'm sorry, yeah, last spring in twen- twenty twenty-four, in the US House race. Okay, so Kelly, Kelly was running for governor and so he was vacating that seat. At, you know, it was, there's an extra layer of this because Rick Becker couldn't be on the ballot at the convention. But at the North Dakota Republican State Convention that was held in Fargo, um, we had uh, um, now Congresswoman Fedorcheck, who was on the ballot, and we had Alex Bilas, who was also on the ballot at the convention because they had gone through the steps to get themselves on that ballot there. And then there's other things that happened at the convention related to. That's a whole other story. You're absolutely right. But that is exactly that process. And so now with that in mind, if, if this bill had been in place, Alex Bilas would have gotten the endorsement. He would have been the Republican on the general election ballot in November. And many people would say, what the heck, where, you know, he hasn't been involved in party politics. He hasn't been there. He won the vote. That's what he got. I think there's still a good chance that Congressman Fedorcheck would have still won in November even as an independent. And so that process still works fine. And the process is all in place. You still go through the party convention. We've, as, as party members, we've lost the party, the convention's strength, which is what it should be. That's where you get the party insiders. I mean, two thousand of your friends in, in one building to do this. You know, meanwhile, across town, the same dates, Democrats were doing, you know, with theirs with, I don't know, a couple of hundreds or whatever it was. Again, it shows the strength of the party and, you know, there are factions. There are people that look at the world a little bit differently, but it's, it's interesting. It's a, to me, it's a better way.
You mentioned Fedorcheck probably would have still won. I, I don't disagree that, but it would have been a very interesting race because the money of the Republican Party would have been behind Bilas. And that would have made a huge impact, along with the fact that there's people that voted for Fedorcheck because she had an R behind her name.
Would, would Fedorcheck have ran as an independent even at that point or would she have conceded?
But, but that's, but that sets up a different dynamic then, right? If, if, because, because this is the thing. And, and actually, Ed Schaefer said this. So, you know, the, the representative from Bismarck that brought this, one of the comments that he made was as he went door to door, he had a lot of people that were telling him, oh, you know, you know, we'll vote for you. It'll be, it'll be fine. Just go ahead and go on to the ballot. Ed Schaefer got up there and said, you know what? As you were going door to door, maybe you should have asked those people if they would come to your endorsement. Have them come to the endorsing convention, which is where it should happen in the first place. Now we've got a cohesive way of looking at this that actually gets the right candidates moving forward. Because the party insiders, it, it's not that we have, that we're, that we're perfect as party insiders, but we have the brand that we own as members. And that is what we're actually talking about in those endorsing processes. You know, someone who votes, you know, twice every two years and that, they, they only think about politics, you know, the fifteen minutes before they walk in the door. Should they get to pick the people that are the representatives of the party on the ballot? Because that's what we do today. Anybody can walk in and do that. And that's why money matters so much today. Is because you have to win a primary.
Right, yep, absolutely.
Anyway, that's probably enough state stuff.
We can talk a little Minot stuff here. You guys, uh, last week, you had an interesting city council meeting.
You had a, you had an official statement. So early in the day, well, official statement on, on your Alderman Facebook page. Earlier in the day, you guys received information that, it's just a weird story, okay? And I, and not saying that it's a false story. That's not what I'm implying by weird. It's just a weird uh, deal. Angel, sorry, Angel Dogforce has great sound, guys. That's basically where we're at. We get complimented when our sound is good.
Mini heart attack moment there.
All right. But anyways, it was an interesting deal to, that Capstone, the police chief and interim police chief and all that, where you guys received information earlier Monday before you guys just vote that evening that perhaps Plasis was actually interested. It created a very weird picture for the city of Minot when you looked at the optics of it. We talked about that. I've talked about that with Fuller. We talked about that on the podcast last Tuesday. Optically, it looked like there was a fight going on. You know, it looked like city council went and said, hey, we said you could do the city manager. Nope. From your perspective, should there be any concern about stuff like that going on? Or do, do we feel like city of Minot is pretty unified? If somebody's looking to come in as a permanent chief, please, do they need to wor- be worried about uh, any, any uh, thing in the leadership or anything like that that might cause problems?
I don't, I don't think so. I, you know, okay, so I'll give, I'll give my perspective. I did in the writing that I did earlier this week, although again, I didn't go too far into it and I, I probably won't today either. But, but what I will say is that from the beginning, when this process started up and we, we were, we were headed towards a path that at least had the possibility of the, of Chief Klug not continuing. You know, the conversations that I was having with the city manager at the time was around the idea that, hey, you know what? It doesn't sound like, like Captain Plasis wants to continue in this role. He's doing a fabulous job at it, but it's, it's just not what he's intending to do. And with that in mind, um, you know, and I, I have other contacts. I, I serve on the board of the American Experiment North Dakota and, you know, they have a, they have a, a policy fellow that focuses on law enforcement. And I had a conversation with him, actually a couple of conversations about what are best practices if we get in that spot? And he said, you know what? An interim chief can be a solid way to go. Someone from completely outside, who isn't on the list of who should be the permanent chief. Just coming in, steady the ship, make sure things are going the way that they should, implement straightforward reforms if they, if they're needed, but just steady the ship. And so that had been my thought process throughout. That's, so when Harold brought that as a thought process, I, I had been in general agreement. But that was all predicated on Plasis not being interested. And, and so, you know, with, with what's, what the department has been through over the last six months, when we got the information on Friday that, that Dale actually was, and, and again, it, it may be that his thoughts on it evolved over time. You know, he, he may have gotten to the point where he felt that he really could, he could do that. And so the information that I got on it was that he was interested, he wanted to do it. And I saw no reason to not honor that request. And so that's, that's where my vote went. Now, I wouldn't say I felt so strongly about it that it would have been my motion to go that direction. You know, again, keeping in mind, when we're doing most of this stuff, we're either working with what the main staff recommendation is or an alternative that's written by, in this case, the city manager, right? These are the other alternatives the council has. So this isn't, you know, Alderman Lisa Olson brought this motion. It wasn't Lisa going off script. It was using another alternative that was within our list. And so, um, you know, the, the one part, and I, and I debated a little bit because, you know, I, I had some sense that it could go this way. Uh, I debated a little bit about trying to make a statement about why my vote was going to go where it was. And I've done that on other things, even when not comfortable all the time. On this one, I didn't, I didn't feel, number one, I also knew that there was some, some comments that were coming during personal appearances that were going to muddy a bunch of the waters again. And, and you guys saw those on, on there. For me, I didn't, I didn't feel like it was in the best interest of anyone to have a debate over it. It was more straightforward to go ahead and, and, you know, voter conscience on, on each of us. And it was five to two, so everybody did. They voted, you know, they had different thoughts and some voted the other way. Again, I, I believe that we went the right direction. That's why I voted the way that I did, but time will tell. You know, we, we don't know. And we, you know, I worked a, a little bit after that vote to make sure we were clear on what the city manager was saying to us. Because there was these, there were these comments about, you know, well, we're not going to be able to move these things forward as quickly as we want. And I'm asking, well, do you want a motion? Like, do you want us to direct something here or, you know, or, or is that all fine? It was, no, it's fine. But I just want to be clear that, you know, it's going to be status quo.
Yeah, don't expect any heady changes in the next few months, but.
Exactly. So it was, you know, it, it's one of those where I, I'm sure especially observing it, it seemed strange. You know, the, it, it's, I don't know. It's just kind of the way things work sometimes. Sometimes we get information even at the last minute that can help change our perspective on something. And that's in this case what happened.
Yep. And, and it's good to be fluid. It's good not to be stuck in, in the ways.
For sure.
Anything you want to add?
I think that's, that's pretty clear. I think. You have anything?
No, I, I think I'm good. We're, we're at two o'clock. We're, we, we've had a good, good conversation.
Fun time.
Anything you want to add?
Last parting words?
I don't, I don't think so. You know, I think, um, you know, as, as we've, as we were talking about earlier, we are going to head into the budget sessions again. And you know, my, my hope is that people um, use this opportunity to come out and start making their voices heard more. Because this is, you know, it, we, Rob and Scott and I got elected and I think we've delivered on the things that we campaigned on and started that process. But now, I guess the same before, the real work starts. Because now it's, we're going to be, oh, it's not just, oh, there's a pile of money. Go ahead and give some back. Now it's going to be, okay, where can we start making things leaner? Where can we start changing the trajectory of actual spending a little bit? Not just the, not just the, the, you know, reserves that we're using.
Then you have a looming police department that needs, needs a new facility, whether that's this budget, probably not next five years.
There'll be, there'll be some of that. You know, we, we, I think we'll see something over the next couple of meetings um, about the actual contract for that architectural work, which is never cheap. You know, but at the same time, to, to say that the only options we had were to spend fifty million or eighty million wasn't working for me. You know, that was why I brought that motion in the first place was to say, no, I want to flip the script a little bit and say, we have this much money. What can we get for that? That's a different way of looking at it. I think we have to start doing that more often. Because I think, you know, we've got a facility down there right now that I think i- if we treat it the right way, can do, do the right things for us. You know, it, it's centrally located. It's, you know, people know where it's at. And if we invest the right amounts of money in it, we can make it really workable for a long time. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, nobody's saying, you know, just, you know, give it some paint and you're done. No, we're, you know, we've got a lot of HVAC work to do. We've got to reconfigure some portions of the building, but that's a lot different than building a law enforcement center in another part of town. That's a whole other question.
Absolutely, absolutely. Maybe, maybe it looked nice on North Hill right next to the new potential hospital.
You can just hop on Broadway or the bypass. It's a straight shot, right?
Well, thank you for coming on. It's been a great conversation. It's been too long. So we'll have to make sure that doesn't happen again. Very good. Well, thank you for watching this episode of Minot Talk. Be sure to tune in this Thursday, eight AM for some more conversation about what's going on in Bismarck. Thanks for watching. Have a great day.